I will call the meeting to order and ask if you could stand, if you're able, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment, if anyone wishes to speak on anything, not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, I will move on. Mr. McCarthy, how are you today? Good, thank you.
Congratulations to all who worked on the Back to the Eighties Musical for all of their hard work culminating in three great performances. The Student Council participated in MASC Bochi at Rockland High School in order to promote unity in our school. Personally, it was great hearing from others around the state that Middleborough represented the black and orange well through our fans, athletes, and the partners. The girls' track team earned the distinction as the South Shore League Champions. Congratulations to them. And members of both the boys' and girls' track teams take on the league meet at the Reggie Lewis Center in Boston tonight. The second semester started on Monday with great success. This also means the first round of Biology MCAS is right around the corner for a freshman that took it first semester. Winter Ball will be held on Saturday, February 3rd, from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. Students can purchase tickets for $10 at lunch or at the door. And the Student Council Lock-In will be held on February 10th and 11th, as the snow forced us to reschedule, but spots are still available for all of those who are interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. And we should make mention of the fact that for the both track teams, all their meets are held at the Reggie Lewis Center, which means they have about an hour and a half drive each way, given the time that they play, and they should be commended for the amount of time they actually put in, not just for the work that they do, but also for that long bus ride. So, thank you for mentioning how wonderful they've done this year.
And, Mr. Chair, I also wanted to add that Mr. Brandigan, our A.D., Ryan Silvia, and Sean Siciliano, AV Media Communication Specialist, are up at that meet tonight, making sure that that meet is livestreamed for the community. So, anyone who wants to tune in, or may have tuned in, it goes to On Demand also. You can also click on On Demand and watch that, but I don't know if they're, they probably are still live. I know they warm up at 4:30 and they go on from there, if it's like it was when my daughters did Winter Track, and I know Brian Sun runs Winter Track also. So, I also wanted to make mention, I'm not sure if you, you may have said it, Owen, I'm not sure, I just want to make mention of the Back to the Eighties Musical that was done this past weekend. Very, very, very well done. I happened to attend on Sunday afternoon, and it was, it was very, very well done. Nice production, and I think the young people did a nice job, and the adults in charge certainly did a great job coordinating that, so.
Any questions for Owen? Thank you, Owen, we really appreciate it. I'll ask if any of the school committee members have any reports they'd like to give.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do want to say, we do have some new hires. I want to welcome them all. Kelly, Karen, Robert, and Stephanie, thank you for joining our team. And another piece that, it's educationally related, but I want people to think about, if you do a quick search on Cape Town, Africa, water, think about what's going on right now. They are 10 weeks from running out of water. Physical drinking water, they're going to shut off, they're, they're pretty much being handing out water right now. Drinking water, you think of it, you turn the faucet on, it's there. Cape Town, Africa is actually running out of water, and they're, they're counting down to day zero, they call it, where they'll have no more water left. So, no hydrants, no nothing. So, it's an interesting thing, think about it. And when we come up to our drought in the summer, think about watering your driveway instead of, you know, let's not water our driveways, and we're thinking about our lawns and pouring that water down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything that they want to mention? Seeing no one, I will move on. Mr. Cutino, we welcome you to come talk to us.
New semester has started up at the high school. We had the open house last night. I wasn't sure how many people were actually in the building. I got four people to show up, because I have an honors geometry class, that's a lot of freshmen, and so, four, I think, was, was the jackpot for the number of parents that were at any one given location. And I did get to see Mr. Givinoni, because I have his son in honors geometry, and we'll see how, how he ends up faring with all electronic digital stuff, so. Did you ever get to see if you were able to look at his stuff on, in the Google Classroom?
In the Google, yes, Mr. Chair, in the Google Classroom. First of all, I'm impressed, everything that you're talking about, how they're doing math, including formulas with the symbols and everything on, on Google, Google Docs, and you had the add-in piece, so that they can do the symbols, whether it's a square root or not. That is impressive. I actually looked into it for my own use for engineering, because I do things by hand, and I show it by hand, because it's easier. Maybe I'll start incorporating some of that, so maybe I'll have to have him teach me. But I, when I went into the Google Classroom, parents get to see that there are assignments there. They don't get to really go in and look at their homework from that point. But I'm still, I like to know, because then I can ask the question, which is a big thing, is, hey, what's going on with this, or what's going on with that? And that's, that's a great piece. Plus, you have those textbooks online. That was really cool.
Oh, yeah, those are, those are excellent. We've got a lot of them.
Yeah.
For like, all of our subjects, pretty much, so.
So, I was quite impressed. I hadn't been in your class yet, so I appreciate you taking the time last night and going through that.
Anyway, any other questions for Mr. Cutino?
Oh, Mr. Chair?
With regards to last night's work, they, the presentations that were given by the teachers as well, just to kind of offshoot it, Learning to Cope was there again, with their, with their bedroom for parents to go through, to, they have a mock-up bedroom, things to look for with your students. So, that open house had other things attached to it, which I thought was really a piece that some parents need to, you know, just kind of walk through and think about. So, it was, it was a good, also the smaller numbers, unfortunately. Good information, real good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Lynch, the next up is recognition, and I do see Mr. Carey in the audience, so, Mr. Carey, I'll invite you and your friends over, if you'd like to come to here.
Mr. Chair, under recognition tonight, we're bringing down to the podium three young men, recent MHS grads, alums, if you will, James Carey, Anthony Abisad, and Jake Belanger. These young men have taken it upon themselves to form a group, company, if you will, called Exposed Culture. And they did some fundraising over the holidays, and I received this memo from Rebecca Bagnell, Director of Food Services. As they get settled, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to just read this email, or portions, portions of the email. It says, "Good morning, Mr. Lynch. Yesterday afternoon, we had a visit from three MHS grads. Together, they have created a company called Exposed Culture. They had a benefit at Camp Umequus over vacation with music and art vendors. All the money they raised, they are using to help the community of Middleborough. They donated food to the food pantry, they donated clothes to the Boston charity, and handed the school department $694 in cash to put towards lunch accounts." It says, "I know in the past, we have not done any sort of a press release. It helped that the two donors chose to remain anonymous prior, but these young people deserve attention, and they deserve to be recognized, and their cause is well worth the effort." So, we bring them tonight to recognize them, to thank them, to perhaps have a little conversation about what the future brings for you gentlemen in this group, and we welcome you, and go right ahead. The floor is yours.
Mr. Carey, why don't you introduce everybody there, so we know?
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Lynch. To my left is Anthony Abisad, huge part of the operation. To my right, TJ Froyo, he's also a huge part of the operation. Mr. Belanger wasn't able to make it tonight, he has night classes, so he had to get to that. You know, I started this project, I'd say it really started to take fold early last year, but it's always been an idea of mine. You know, growing up, I had so many visions, and how I wanted to take things and do things, and I was trying to figure out how exactly I could all put that together, and how to be able to make it work cohesively. So, with a little bit of thinking, I came up with the idea of, you know, having this, it's so broad of a spectrum, to the point where it can attack every market available, really. I'd like to brand this out, Exposed Culture. I passed out these pamphlets and these packages, where you'll see the definition of what our company is. We are Exposed Culture, universal platforming. And what that means is universal, basically, everything. Everything that encompasses this world and this universe and platform, you know, a place to build, a place to, you know, rise, give rise. You know, inside those, you know, envelopes, you'll find goodies, magnets, stickers, all that sort of thing. But really, I'd like you guys to take a look at the definitions and really see the basic of what this is. You know, you see kids, and you see people that really can't find what they, what they're looking for, you know, they don't have that, you know, maybe they're so slowed down or pushed back, to the point where they can't flourish how they'd want to, or get to places that they'd want to be. So, that, that's the basic idea of what this is, is come to us, no matter what you do. You know, this isn't just music, this isn't just art. You know, music and art are a great catalyst of, you know, this, this positive platform that we're trying to put out, and that's why we use them. But this is generally for everyone to be able to use, you know, from everything, really. So, we encourage people to take the initiative to contact us, you know, email us, whatever, and figure out how you can be involved, or if you see something coming up, figure out how you can take part in it, or anything like that, because every single person on this planet has something that they can do, and they just have to be put in a position where they can really put out their power, you know? And that's exactly who we are, you know? We aim to intrigue, you know, initiative, bring out the best in people, and, you know, ultimately, give rise. And, you know, that's, that's the idea of what, what we've come to create, and, you know, it started out as an idea, and along the way, it just stays going and stays going. The snowballs climbing and, with my team, and only a couple of us can make it tonight, but, you know, this is a, a thing where a lot of people are grasping onto and using to their advantage, so they can get to places that they want to. So, that's basically the summary behind this.
Mr. Carey, if people want to get in touch with you, how would they do that?
So, we have email, exposedculture@gmail.com, or you can find us on, you know, Twitter, Instagram, not really Facebook, but, you know, maybe, need be. James Carey, you can find us, but ultimately, Exposed Culture. And from there, you know, you'll talk to one of us, and we'll really just start to figure out exactly how, you know, whatever you want to bring to the table, how can we take that, and how can we help you bring that out and show people whatever you want, you know, whatever these people want to do, let's make it happen for them, and that's exactly what it is. You know, right now, we have a lot of artists and musicians and that sort of thing, but we also have, you know, IT kids, and kids that are trying to build computers, and how do I, you know, get them gigs, like, hey, you know, we'll get you these computers, figure out how to work on, and that sort of thing.
I think that's one of the biggest reasons why we're here, too, because I know a lot of this is regarding youth culture as well, and I think that's one of the most important things. And one of our things as well is make a positive impact, and I think if we can make a positive impact on the youth culture through our outlet, because we're also in tune with what's going on with social media very heavily, we're all very, very, so, much so involved in it. And so, I think if we can have that reach, and maybe work with you guys as well, in whatever way we can, I think that would be a great little thing, and sort of relate it to what they're in tune with, you know, regarding certain outlets that are on social media and things like that right now, especially like creatively, because I think that's a huge part of every kid's lives, regardless if it's academic or outside of school as well.
And, oh, these gentlemen, had a chance to meet Megan Quirk, our Family Resource Center Director, now, she's housed down at the HBB.
Yes.
Had a chance to chat with her about some of the community's needs in town here, and that might be some direction for you. Do you plan on organizing a 501(c)(3) at some point, to organize yourself as a charitable organization?
See, I've been advised, you know, why don't you take the nonprofit route and all that, but that's the thing, you know, this is very structured, and a lot of planning goes into, anything that we put out, anything that we do, we want it to be meticulous. So, at the moment, no, I do not want to bring this to a nonprofit stage, because ultimately, I think I can do a lot more with it than...
Okay. I was just thinking, in terms of donations, you might be able to get more donations if people know that they can write it off as a charity, that's all, that's just a suggestion. Any members of the committee have any questions or comments for these three gentlemen and their friends, who couldn't make it tonight?
Mr. Carey, I know, for those who haven't been on the committee that long, you've been here before, previously, to talk about the track that you took with Massasoit and the Braga program, and I'm just wondering, did that help you in establishing this?
You know, you take the information you're given as you learn, as you grow, and you, you know, you, you take it all into consideration, and you really have to be able to use it to your advantage. So, yes, I'd say every, that particular class helped me a lot. Not only did it get me out of the high school, shows that you can, you know, schooling itself is very, you know, it can be in very different forms, you know, and it got me thinking about the whole business aspect, and really inclined into learning about businesses, and how I, how I'd be able to maybe one day run my own business. So, yes, I'd say that, you know, and that, through that, we've run multiple shows, and you know, that, all that information that I've gathered there, and through other, you know, information that I've gathered, we were able to put on, not only the Get Witted event, you know, the Run It Up event back in last August, where all the profits went to the Providence Rescue Mission, as well as the Sacred Heart Food Pantry and food donations. This is basically a way for us to get noticed in the area. We did this, we chose Middleborough specifically, because we wanted to have our hometown, really, you know, we wanted you guys to see who we are, you know? And I think we did that great, and now, as time, you know, 2018 progresses, there's a lot more in terms of expanding outward. You know, we'd like primarily focusing on Massachusetts at this point, but we do have connections out in multiple other states and countries who represent Exposed Culture. You know, this idea, this platform, they really like this idea, and who will put on for it. So, in terms of where we're going next, you know, everything that you guys offered to these children in this community, I thank you for it, you know, keeping these people these informed and on the right path, you know? I know it's hard, but maybe that's where we could work together to kind of connect, make smart cool, you know? Learning cool, that sort of thing.
Mr. Stevens, I know you had a...
No, I just want to make a comment, that when I first heard about this, and was told about what you guys did, I think it's really impressive that you just went out and did things, you know? A lot of people talk, and they complain, and so, just keep that up. I mean, just doing things, I think, is very special, so.
I think one of the biggest things, too, is that's why we all work together great. Each one of us has our own little asset, or tool, or greatness, that works so cohesively with everyone else, you know? So, I can wake up in the morning, be like, James, we really, really should do this, and I think this would be amazing, but I don't have the tools, I don't have the strength.
Yeah.
And then, three, four hours later, James, like, it's done. I mean, this is amazing, this is great, and that's why I enjoy working with him so much as well.
That was a bigger, other thing that I took from you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of people out there, especially a lot of younger people, have some great ideas. They just don't know how to put it together. And for me, you guys are the, the model to have people come before you and say, hey, I have this idea, can you help me make it work?
You know, that's exactly our jobs. You know, this is something that I truly want to create for my career, I want this to be my full-time everything, it's just being the founder of Exposed Culture, and through that, I request people to bring their ideas, and whatever they have, and bring it to the table, and see what we can do, because there is a lot, you know, there's, there is a lot that can be done every day, you know, you have, you know, we're blessed to be able to wake up every single day. People, people don't get that chance, you know? So, that's kind of the thing that we gotta make people understand, so they can really start expressing their true selves. But I thank you guys for having me, all of you.
Thanks for coming. You're a credit to yourselves, you're a credit to your upbringing, whoever inspired you to do these things along the way. Obviously, you're independent now, and you're inspiring yourselves, so congratulations. As you go along, if we can help out in any way, we'd be glad to. I know the school committee would be happy to have you back, and maybe get an annual report of how you're doing, and so, but thank you very much, and congratulations. And thank you very much for the donation.
And one thing, too, before you guys go, I just want to say that please let us know about events that you guys are running, because we will be more than happy to publicize them here, to make sure they go out in the community, and people know, know about them, and know that they're there.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing, so thanks a lot, guys. And now, I'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Prior to the beginning of the agenda here, I wanted to go back a couple of days here to the storm we had, and sort of let folks know who are tuned in, who may not be tuned in. I was not interviewed by the paper, but I had a couple of colleagues who were interviewed by the paper, a couple of colleague superintendents, along a row of Totten, West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Bridgewater-Ranham, Whitman-Hanson, Abington, Avon, there are a number of school systems that did not have a delay the other day. We were one of those school systems that did not have a delay, a weather delay. At 4:00 a.m., quarter to four, 4:00 a.m., I, you know, get up, and you turn on the weather, and you turn on, you look at the predictions, and you go from station to station to station, and you look at, you know, we'll be, we'll have three inches by 9:00 a.m., and we may get five inches by the end of the day, and different stations have two to four, and one to three. And I have to make my decision by 5:00 or 5:15 a.m., so that the buses can warm up, and the high school teachers can get to the high school, and things such as that. So, I did make that decision, I did not, we, I did have contact, constant contact, with a number of other superintendents through email, and through text, and phone, and made the decision based on the weather predictions at that time. Unfortunately, after the decision was made, from the period of, at 5:00 a.m. to about 7:00 a.m., we proceeded to get really dumped on with a couple of big, big waves of snow. And I know that Greg had school at Bridgewater-Ranham, because my wife has, is a teacher there also. So, hindsight being what it is, I probably would have gone with the delay, we still would have been a little bit messy in town, but I would have gone with the delay. Our companies got to the schools a little bit later than I'd like, in terms of the morning, getting the, the parking lots plowed, and that was something that is definitely we can work on, and I've spoken with Mr. Peck from the DPW about that. So, like I said, hindsight being what it is, as a superintendent, I never, ever want to put anyone in danger. Balance that with, we do live in New England, and we do have to deal with snow and weather, but sometimes the weather surprises us. If they had ever said that by 7:00 a.m., New Bedford would have eight inches of snow, I never would have guessed that, and nobody guessed that. And even the weather folks on television that night were saying that we got this one wrong, and we apologize for that, to all those folks that depend on the weather. So, sort of, I guess it's an apology on my behalf, that I do feel that maybe it was a dangerous situation with some individuals, depending on what they drive and what they were driving, there were some conditions that were poor, but it was, like I said, I would never put anyone in harm's way, and, and like I said, hindsight being what it is, I probably would have made a different decision, but that's the way it was, so.
Did, did, did everyone make it to school okay?
Yeah, we did not have any accidents, we didn't have any injuries, people were, and understandably, I think folks that teach at the high school, probably driving in the dark, and depending on where they were coming from.
From distance, yes.
Yeah.
The reason why I, we're fortunate, but I, and I didn't second-guess you at all, because I went to bed, and I have a, I have a special weather site that I, that I go to, and they said we weren't going to get, there was not even potential for more than two inches of snow, and that, that's, that's a national weather potentiometer that they have, that's a kind of hidden site. So, I woke up in the morning, and I said, we've got two inches right now, and then all of a sudden, another three dumped by 7:00 o'clock, and like you said, once, we've got the special education buses that go out, and by 5:00 o'clock, if you don't call it, it's done.
Right.
And at that point, to stop it would almost be dangerous, to try to stop things, and then try to pick up kids and get calls out to parents. I think that you made a call, I stand behind your call, I don't, if ever, if other people don't like it, they could just keep their kids at home.
I did have one parent, I know there are parents, perhaps, in other social media that might have had some things to say, I didn't see those, but I would tell you that I did have one phone call, and I did talk with that parent, and explain the situation, and why I made the decision, so. And I did have a call from a faculty member, and I tried to reach out to that faculty member, but that person did not reach out back to me, so. So, but yes, I would agree with you there, Brian, and I thank you very much for that, but like I said, there was no way of knowing, and tonight's another one, because now they're producing some, a similar coast, a coating to an inch or two for tomorrow morning. Now, what that looks like in the morning, we'll have to find out.
I think in 1978, Don Kent said there would be the same thing, a coating to an inch, 48 inches later.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
I just want to say, in the old district in which I was a school committee member of, the thing that was amazing to me was the superintendent didn't make the call, it was the chairman of the school committee who made the call. So, I spent two years having to do that, and I know from the conversations with you, and I think it's important to know, and that was before emails, so there was no conversations with other superintendents and other districts. The only conversations you had, and I know you continue to have them, is essentially with the police chief and the DPW.
DPW and Mr. Hutch, Jim Hutchinson is a very important part of that.
We appreciate it, but I also think we should mention, and it has been the policy of this district, as it is most districts, that parents need to decide on their own about their children, and their children are not going to suffer because they didn't go to school on a day where there was snow.
I was going to conclude by saying that, it's always parents' discretion, their own child's safety is at their discretion. I do, I must say, I do put more value on a full school day in January than I do a full school day at the end of June. And when we have MCAS tests coming up, and midterms coming, oh, the midterms just passed, but important classes to take, blocks, four blocks in a high school, 84 minutes each, you think about those, I think about losing one of those, you think about the day, and are we better off, learning, is learning better off in Middleborough if we have school in January? So, it's one of those deals that you, you make the decision and sort of stick with it, and, but every once in a while, the weather changes, and it makes you look not so hot, but, and I'm not going to blame it on Jim Hutchinson, but it's his fault, I'm just kidding. Okay, so, moving on with my agenda tonight, we do have a theme tonight, and I want to talk about the theme. Tonight's theme is, is one of our reports for the school committee, is infrastructure. We have three coordinators slash directors here tonight, who are going to talk about some very important things. Things that don't always get the highlights, and things that don't, that don't get videos made of them, or, but they're basically in tune with the basic needs of our, of our faculty and our students. We're going to have the Family Resource Center talking about the basic news, needs of students and families tonight. We're going to have the Dirt Team Coordinator, Andy Deisel, talking about basic safety and security, a lot of the stuff that goes on behind the scenes, that we don't know a lot about, but is so necessary to have. And Jim Hutch is going to be talking about sort of the basic comfort, if you will, of making sure that we have parking lots that are plowed, and making sure that we have areas that are clean, and making sure we do everything we can to prevent the spread of flu and cold, and making sure our custodians are doing their job, et cetera. So, that basic infrastructure is the theme for tonight. So, with that being said, I would invite Megan Quirk, who's our Family Resource Coordinator, to come on up. And Megan has visited with us before, the history of this position, for those of you not familiar with it, was that we first started this position with a donation from the Henry B. Berklin Parents Group. The district matched that. Ms. Quirk came in on a part-time basis, until we just started discovering, just exploring options with our Title I funding, and the Title I funding agreed that this would be something that they would fully support. And so, from then on, it has been a full-time position, and really, for Megan, it's more than a full-time position. I know you've put in more time than it's on, on paper, so, we welcome Megan here tonight. She's going to talk about her program, and what the Family Resource Center does, and what the Family Resource Center provides for our students, our families, and the community of Middleborough.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much for having me. So, I shared my new brochure, and I'll make sure that I get those out to everyone, but it looks like we have one. But I was going to kind of go through those bullets, and starting with the real basics and the work that I've been doing since the beginning, is the nutrition, you know, and kids needing food, and access to regular and consistent food. So, just to start there, our snack support program history was that when we first, when I first got started, I thought it would be great to do the Backpack Program, which is a weekend food program, and then decided to start a little bit smaller. Last year, in the spring, we did a snack program, we started a snack program... Last year in the spring, we did a snack program, we started a snack program. And by the end of the school year, last year, we had 32 kiddos signed up and basically they got five snacks a week, brought them home on Friday, and then every day of the following week, they had a snack for during the school day. That morphed into our summer food program, which looked more like the backpack program. Each child, 23 of the 32, received five to six pound bags of food each week. And now we're at about 53 kiddos receiving snacks every week. The South Shore Community Action Council donates 1,060 snacks a month to our snack program. So I'm extremely grateful for the collaboration with the South Shore Community Action Council as well as with St. Vincent de Paul and with the MHS Student Council because St. Vincent de Paul and the Student Council at MHS really helped me to launch this program and then it just grew to the point where I really needed to access a larger food distribution center. So I go down to Plymouth and I pick up food every other week and bring it back and we have a wonderful volunteer who comes over with Glenda every week now and packs the snacks. And on Friday, I have a wonderful volunteer who distributes the snacks for me. So it's become a nice program and it grows every week. I have about one to two kiddos each week being added. So from there, kids obviously need clothing and warm clothing, so I have 35 totes of clothing and winter wear in the auditorium of HBB. So if families need clothes, they can absolutely reach out and I will pack a bag for them. If we find out that a child is experiencing an emergency homelessness situation, we will pack a bag for them, a blessing bag, including a blanket, toiletries, and we'll send that with the child so that they have, especially during the winter, make sure they have warm sweatshirts, a jacket, hat mittens and all of that. We even have boots and some shoes and that's a goal for next year is to have a pair of shoes in every size. My goal is black Converse because I can line them up and it doesn't matter, just go grab a pair of Converse in your size and, you know, we will replace those and for the next kiddo. So the referrals coming in, not only, you know, for clothing and for food, is housing is huge and how can we help our families to connect with the department or DHCD, father bills and the YMCA, just an automatic and wonderful collaboration that we've been able to develop. And then housing solutions down in Kingston. Sometimes parents need help accessing the DTA, unemployment, mass health and fuel assistance. These are also things that we'll be working on. Transportation is a tough one, but thankfully the COA has some transportation in town and then we can collaborate and help people to get rides places. So that's something that I've also helped people to do. We have a school store, thanks to Oak Point. Over the summer, they filled my Jeep three times with school supplies. I have enough school supplies probably to get us through a couple of years, backpacks, everything that you could need. And so again, if a kiddo comes in and they need things, they'll get a backpack full of supplies as well. So they come in and they'll just, they'll come to school with the things that they need to get through the day and just, you know, feel like they've got everything that they need. Another big point is emotional and behavioral health. Last year at this time, I received news that we did in fact get, received grant funding from McLean and a big piece of that goes to Interface, which is, Tanya came in June and presented on Interface. Basically, it's a helpline, it's not a hotline, it's a helpline and any resident in town can pick up the phone Monday through Friday, nine to five, and talk with a licensed mental health counselor and learn about resources for, and providers. So they'll have an intake call and that first phone call and go through what they're looking for, their insurance, where they live, their availability, and that counselor will then call them back and give them matches based on that information. And then they'll call them back again after they've made those initial contacts and say, "How's it going?" You know, "Are you happy with your provider?" And if not, "Should we start over?" You know, "What aren't you happy with?" So we share Interface daily. I know I do. So we are hoping just to get the word out about Interface because it is, it's a no-brainer for families, all residents, that, you know, you never know when you're going to need this and it can be overwhelming to make all those phone calls to find a provider that takes your insurance, that's local and that has availability for, for you and for your child. So that's where a big piece of that grant funding went. And another was, we had a five-part workshop with families of children with behavioral challenges. It was managing and understanding, understanding and managing your child's behavior. Kelly Rodriguez from Early Childhood Consultation came. We had eight families regularly in attendance for that five-part workshop. It was a wonderful opportunity for the parents to connect with each other and understand that they weren't alone and it can be really hard to understand and manage your child's behavior when, specifically, these kiddos didn't qualify yet, haven't, or haven't yet qualified for services. So the really young age group. And so that was another piece to the program that we put in place with thanks to McLean. Families come to me every day with, you know, questions about services and resources and it's really my goal to know what's out there. So I give out the Arc of Bristol County, I give out Parent Information Network, New Hope, Hope Floats, there's just so many and those are just little examples, big examples of just a couple of areas of need that I find people are coming to me for. We are relaunching the Grandparent King Care Groups on March 5th. That is a collaboration with the COA. Andrea and I both were, are working with McLean and that was a, that's a McLean-funded program as well. So we're looking forward to relaunching that and hoping to see some, some faces from last year's grandparent group and new faces. So my goal is to really personally invite all of our grandparents and King Care parents and so people will be receiving letters and phone calls from me. And this year has been pretty busy. I've connected with a lot of grandparents and I'm really excited to invite them and hopefully have them come along. Kids can come, we'll have a pizza party and the Y will provide childcare and we will have a group facilitator and just have a nice relaxing evening to connect with each other. Last year, the school transition activities that the FRC participated in was, in the beginning, we did a, I did a preschool, but helped with a preschool binder for preschool kids and parents. It's an informational binder around the preschool years that went out to 60 families. We ordered and distributed 200 countdown to kindergarten calendars, so I sent them off with the MECC families as well as out into the community. I went around and delivered those to our preschools in the area. So those are really nice countdown to K calendars for, and that was developed by the CFCE in Avon with self-help. The FRC worked on the MECC block party and I'm looking forward to another year in helping them to develop their big party for their incoming kindergarten and outgoing kindergarten class. So that'll be fun to do. The K Social at Soul was awesome and second annual. Looking forward to our third annual. We had 70 families come over, 200 people came to Soul Farm in August and it was an amazing event thanks to Soul Farm, self-help and our children's librarian here in town. We had a great night. And then we had a boo hoo breakfast in September on the first day for our K kids and I had 35 people come over, which was great. They came over to the library on that first day between their visits with their classroom. So ongoing, continue, I continue to attend monthly PTA coordinators meetings, so I know what's going on with all the PTAs, the Middleborough Area Assistance Coalition, monthly meetings and that's where all of our relief, I call them our relief providers are there and have been just invaluable to the work that I've been able to do. I don't think that I could help our families as quickly if I didn't have the people around that table. And I invite everyone to come to the next meeting is February 13th at 9:30 in the morning at Lifehouse Church. We did change the day and the time of that, so I'm excited for that to see if maybe some more people will come. And then I attend the Middleborough Matters meetings to stay up to point what's going on in that area. I presented the Family Resource Center to all faculty, kindergarten through 12th grade in the beginning of the school year and just went to the high school a couple of weeks ago so that all staff are familiar with the Family Resource Center and can put a face to a name and know that they can reach out to me. They have a family that has something that they need help with and that I'm here to help. I attend the BBST and CST meetings in a couple of schools and I'm always available to attend a team meeting if a staff member feels or team feels that my presence in that meeting is helpful. If not, they can always refer after the meeting to me. And so last year, we wrapped up with 135 families, outreach to with a total of 205 with that social number. This year, we have, at this point, 99 families that I've connected with, 50 have received supplies, that's not including, included in that number. So I'm at almost 100. So that's really exciting and I'm just looking forward to seeing what the next couple of months bring and the next couple of years. It's really been a wonderful opportunity. I'm extremely grateful. It's an amazing community to be in, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I know you meet with the PTA presidents once a month too and bring your issues to them and they bring issues to you and there's a nice interplay. I attend those meetings also. It reminds me, to me, there's, there's an educational jargon sort of saying that students have to have Maslow before they can Bloom. Maslow and Bloom were both educational folks that studied kids, Maslow studies hierarchy of needs and that, so these kids have to have the basic needs, families have to have basic needs before they can Bloom. And Bloom did a hierarchy about how kids learn. And before we can really get these kids to learn, they have to have their basic needs and that's what this is all about. So we thank you, Megan. Do an awesome job. I don't know what we did five years ago, that amount of work that you're doing, that simply wasn't done five years ago. So we thank you very much and you're the perfect person for the position. Thank you. Any questions from the school committee?
I have one. Is there anything that you've encountered, and I run into it in my job, that a family needs but is really not in the area that we can't, it's difficult to find service for a particular problem because it just doesn't exist in our area. I know a lot of places, people have to go to Boston for certain things and transportation, again, becomes an issue.
Right. I would say, it depends, there's a, it's been more, there's been more of that around the housing that I expected. A lot of families looking for housing are finding they either, they don't make enough to qualify for the apartment that you, so that's an interesting situation and how can we, you know, work around that and who can we connect you with to help you? And then transportation is huge for a lot of our families and helping them to, you know, just get to that interview with the, at the apartment that they, you know, desperately want to, you know, grab onto so badly and it's just getting there. So the transportation's tough. We do have the route to Totten, but people need to get to Plymouth, people need to get to Boston, so that can be tricky. But it's, it's more housing, it's been more of a housing piece this year for, for us, for me, yeah.
And I would assume it's income housing that people can move into rather quickly and the idea of, in most cases, I find, when I did that particular work, it's not necessarily the rent of the place as much as it is first, last, those type of things, that families don't have $1,400 in the bank to give you first and last, it's that kind of thing.
And it's connecting with them too late. It's, it's, people don't realize that there are prevention programs in place for them if they have an eviction notice, that's the time to call or before, if they think they're going to get one, that's the time to call. So it's connecting a little too late and then more of the chronic homelessness is, it's hard because it's, so my goal, when I connect with a parent who's in a situation where they're, they're feeling very hopeless, helpless, is to provide relief in other areas to then help them to focus more on that in a positive way because I feel like all of the other things just, they get in the way. So if we can help someone just feel a little bit of hope, feel a little bit of relief, then it can make a difference in those, those bigger, you know, needs like the apartment. So I, my goal is to help peoples, make people's lives easier every day. I tell parents who might be a little hesitant, is I'm here to help, I'm not here to make your life harder, I'm here to make your life easier and if there's anything that gets in the way of you getting through your day or getting the kids to school or whatever it might be, reach out because I may not be able to help, but I can direct you to someone who can. Maybe I can help, who knows? So.
The interesting piece, you talk about the apartments and the affordable apartments and what they call affordable under the 40B law and all these new apartments, you have some 400 units being built in the next year or so or currently built and being occupied, they're not affordable. Even the affordable ones aren't affordable and that's the sad part. A family of four who's got $32,000 maybe coming in can't afford a $1,700 a month apartment to have a two-bedroom apartment. And, and that's the problem of the quote affordable, it's not affordable. And I completely appreciate, because you've got to go beyond that to the, the not the new, brand-new places that are being built that are just, they're just trying to make cash out of them, which is, I mean, that's business, but you have to find the non-traditional, you got to go back to the old-school multifamily units maybe and find that one that may be affordable. And I applaud everything you're doing. It just, it troubles me when you talk about the housing because we've got so much of it. It's there and we can't put the people in it. And, and I know it's there and I know that's the problem and it's unfortunate, but I, I feel for your struggles because like you said, if you could take those little ones, take those little pieces, maybe that apartment one, might be able to tackle that one separately. But I appreciate everything you do, what the town does. And I do, I actually mentioned at the selectmen's meeting that you'd be, you'd be updating us about it because especially that piece with McLean, that people don't realize it's available to everybody, not just us here.
I also want to say that I think the toughest thing is to communicate to people who are in trouble. As you said, there are ways to get help and there are things to do if people intervene with you beforehand. I'm always troubled, especially when I run into the holiday season. People may not know this, but most of the big programs, Globe Center and everything like that, maxes out the end of October. So for a lot of families, the first time they run into problems during Christmas, they come and they say, "Well, you know, can I apply to this?" And I'm like, "No, because it's already maxed out." And the same thing applies with fuel assistance and everything like that. Everything maxes out much earlier than you anticipate because they're trying to divvy up the resources as quickly as they can. So you hope for more money at times, but, but the problem that you run into is everything's done beforehand and it's, sadly, by people who understand the system and know, and have gone through it. And so when you run with somebody who doesn't understand the system and in some respects ignores the eviction notice and thinks, you know, something may work out, whereas, you know, in most cases, they can get a lawyer to help them with the eviction notice for free if they meet certain qualifications and help them fight the eviction notice. And then the other piece is depending on what's happening, for example, with mortgages, you may find a, a bank that's willing to help move you and pay your moving expenses because it's cheaper for them than going through the process of, of handling an eviction. So those things are out there and I agree and I, and that's the hard part, as you know, is sort of flagging those for people and getting people to do that. But thank you, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks.
Megan, thank you very much for coming. As, as Megan sort of steps away, we're going to have Andy Dizell come down in a second. I just also wanted to mention that somebody else in the audience tonight, Rebecca Bagnell is our Director of Food Services and she's also responsible for making sure that every child in the school system has the availability of a hot meal here at school. And she does, she's not somebody who likes to present reports to the school committee, but she is one of those people that provides for the basic needs of our students on a day-to-day basis. So thank you, Rebecca, and we appreciate you coming. Mr. Dizell is coming down to the podium. You may know Andy Dizell as the Assistant Principal at Middleborough High School, former social studies teacher, done a number of things at the high school, including basketball coaching and tennis coaching and, but one of his sort of main, I don't know, hobbies, if you will, is dirt. And dirt stands for District Emergency Response Team. And Andy coordinates the efforts of the entire district and it's, like I said, it's one of those items that goes unnoticed, it's unheralded, but it's absolutely essential to the smooth operation in terms of a school system and the safety and security that's, that has to be there. It has to be there every day. Like I said, it sometimes goes unnoticed, but Andy, thank you for coming and I know you have some things to share for this.
Sure thing. Thank you very much. Thank you and good evening to everyone. As Mr. Lynch said, this has been a hobby of mine and some of my closest friends for about six years now. When we were tasked with the, the effort to really take a look at our safety and security measures that we have here as a district, we've done a lot of editing, refining, retooling to where we, I believe that we're in a much better place. Obviously, there's always room to grow and be safer and be more secure. Obviously, there's always room to grow and be safer and be more secure, but I'm very thankful to be empowered to help in this effort and to be able to report to you quite a bit of progress since I've last been before this committee in February of sixteen. So, if you'll allow me to go back in time just a little bit, and I could talk for days about this stuff, but I'll be fairly expeditious. Since February of two thousand and sixteen, where I offered to this committee and you offered me in return your unanimous support, and it's much appreciated, a nine-point plan for the next eighteen months in order to get our entire district trained in our approved ABCs of MPS response options, which is our active threat protocol. And I'm very, very happy to report to you that we achieved eight of those nine steps with flying colors. With the ninth step that we had not achieved as of fall, I'm sorry, spring of seventeen, we will achieve spring of eighteen. So, in short, we offered supplemental training for all staff in March of sixteen. We held informational sessions for our kindergarteners, and that was interesting for me, because I spoke not only as the DIRTT chair and a, as an employee of the district, but also as a father of a student that year. And we've done that for the last two years, just to pay attention to the fact that, in addition to all of the concerns and preoccupations of parents that are entering a student into schools for the first time as kindergarteners, we're also going to be having this conversation about safety and security. And we really stress the importance of the conversation beginning at home, because they are the most important conveyors of that safety message. And, and so, we start with that conversation there in April before they matriculate in as kindergarteners. Also, we authored and disseminated back-to-school letters, just kind of reminding everyone and introducing to parents and students who we are, what we're doing, and what we're trying to accomplish. For the last two years, we have met at the annual RISE training for all new teachers, and that training has gone off very, very well. In fall of sixteen, we presented the ABCs at all of the open houses across the district. Now, it was an optional parental presentation that happened at the end of that night, so we had mixed results in the way of attendance. However, it was important that we got our message out prior to training all students, which we did in the fall and winter of two thousand and sixteen, using, and I'll use this term, our network or our friends in school safety. And what I mean by that, and it's later defined, is we have a great partnership with area schools where they help us and we help them train their staff, train their students, and it's really a team effort, not only because it helps expedite the training and, and get kids back on time on learning, but it also sends a clear-cut message that if something goes wrong, we're all coming. It's a community effort. It's a regional effort, and we're all in it together. So, I think that's just an exceptional message that, that we helped to send. Not on the eighteen-month plan that we offered. We began working with the PPS-directed Carolyn Lyons and Kim Bradlawn to streamline a more inclusive training program. What we, a major mistake that we had made was we made one training for all students, and that was totally inadequate, inadequate, and it was an error on our part. And after some wonderful feedback that we got after our elementary school trainings from not just staff, but like myself, parents slash staff, they raised a great question, what are we doing about this population of students? So, we began that conversation, and we immediately made many adjustments that really made our, our entire training a lot more inclusive for all students. Something that I've been talking about for six years, and it's slowly coming to fruition, and slowly, in part, because we want to get it right. We want to do it once, we want to do it correctly, we don't want to rush into it, and I'm happy to report that we are almost to the end of that flip chart conversion, where I want to say it was in two thousand and thirteen, we brought and, and this committee unanimously ratified the staff emergency response plan in total. It's a, it's a pretty comprehensive document. But in an emergency situation, it's not completely user-friendly, because if you need to find something in a rush, you're not going to be able to thumb through the table of contents and get to page thirty-five and read all the information that's there. So, we felt it's very, very important, and this brings us also much closer in line to the two thousand and fourteen governor's report on school safety and security, that they, they urged, unfunded mandate, but they urge us to provide a very easy-to-manage, user-friendly document in case of emergency, which would come in the form of a flip chart. So, I anticipate by August two thousand and eighteen that that job will be completed, and I think it's also a great community connection that we've forged with Reed's Academy. Reed's has just recently started a, a printing program in their school, and for pennies, and I mean pennies on the dollar, they're able to reproduce these, mass-produce these flip charts for us. And, and we've been working with them for the last year or so in doing this, and it's just a great partnership that I'd like to highlight. DIRTT's also helped train hundreds of staff and thousands of students in neighboring districts, as I mentioned, Poniatwick, Carver, Wareham, Rochester, Marion, Mattapoisett, Born, and Sandwich are, are the school districts that we partner with currently, but I'm also very proud to say that those, the number of those schools and districts are growing. I know that Lieutenant Fahey, a member of our executive committee and a lieutenant on the Middleboro Fire Department, has made a connection with Stoughton, that it's also really, I believe, on the cutting edge of their school safety and security. I've attended conferences with their district chair of their DIRTT team, and they're doing some wonderful things. So, our relationships and our network is growing, and I'm very proud of that. In summer seventeen, SRO Trask and myself attended the NASRO conference, and that is the National Association of School Resource Officers, and that was held in Washington, DC, and it really was an invaluable experience for both of us to share, as we're not able, you know, just able to converse with the educators and the law enforcement leaders across the country that deal with this stuff on a, on a regular basis. But it also allowed us to divide and conquer. So, instead of just being, being able to go to two or three things a day, we, we did two or three, two or three things per person, and we really were able to amass a lot of information and bring it back to our district. So, I found that very, very valuable, valuable, sorry. Seventeen, eighteen so far. We've helped train, nope, nope, sorry. So, this year so far, our members were able to go to Carver Elementary, Old Colony Regional, Rochester Elementary, and Mattapoisett Elementary, and that's about halfway through the school year, and we've already done that, which is, again, just reinforcing our network. We conducted our training at the kindergarten just prior to our Thanksgiving break, and that's something that is going to obviously occur on an annual basis, because they have no, 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 no information prior, so that we've got to get the ball rolling with them. And we've created a very, very, a quick, a thirty-minute presentation, very age-appropriate, using language that has been vetted through the professionals, through the American Association of Psychiatry, through the, the leaders in school safety. We're, we're using tools and verbiage and training techniques that meet them at their level, where they're at. That in concert with having the, the conversation really began at home, which is our hope, really makes that training very effective. But in an effort to, to keep the ball rolling but not roll out the, the enormous job it is to train every single student in every single building with a team of trainers, we, we piloted this year a system where the assistant principals, who are on the executive committee, we empowered them to go ahead and review with their own students in their building at their, at their leisure, so to speak, but before the Thanksgiving break. That was, that was our goal. So, for instance, I was able to refresh and retrain the students in the high school the first Friday of the school year, where we brought them down by class, and I had them for about forty-five minutes reviewing and, and doing a little bit of hands-on, but not nearly as much hands-on training as we did the year before with our, our initial all-out training. And we're, the DIRTT team is going to come back and, and say, "Do we need to do our initial training again each year and have that, that hour-long, hands-on, multifaceted training? Or can we do it every other year? Or can we do this half-hour refresher?" And so, we're having that conversation at the executive committee level, and so I anticipate to have a plan toward the end of this school year in preparation for the following school year, as to how we're going to go ahead and train the students next year. Lastly, goals for the coming school year. Again, work collaboratively with Reed's Academy to print the MPS response options flip chart, and anticipated deadline for that would be August of eighteen. Conduct scripted barricade and lockdown drills in each of our five schools. Now, not to go too much in the history of, of what exactly locked down and what, why was it for twenty-five years we were teaching our students to do this, but we all decided at our last DIRTT meeting that we, we want to begin with baby steps, you know, when we're really, again, keeping the ball rolling here. But in the spring, we're going to have a very scripted, detailed drill where both the staff and the students will know in advance of the drill, the time, the place, the location, and, and really the scenario, and that will be able to foster conversation between staff and students in preparation, not looking to shock or traumatize through training, of course, because that is not our goal ever to do that. But it's important for us to, to take baby steps in getting this going. Mr. Young.
It's essentially like a fire drill.
Certainly.
You know, there are, you, a teacher may not tell all their students they're going to have a fire drill, but the teacher may also tell the students she believes she needs to tell, that here she needs to tell that there's going to be a fire drill, and so that they're ready for it. And so, I agree that the conversation with students, letting them know is, you know, it's not just, like you said, shock and awe, it's, it's just to have people think and realize what works and what doesn't work.
And it's all, and it's a great point for you to bring up, too, because we want to get these drills to maybe not be as common as the, the mandated for fire drills per year, but we do want to have this entrenched as muscle memory. I mean, that's the goal of the training, and it's important to note that there hasn't been a school, school fatality as caused by a fire since nineteen fifty-eight, which is when these drills became mandatory. And so, you train on it, your muscle memory, and, and you, you get used to it, you know, not, of course, we ever want to use this training. I say that every single time we train, I hope this is the best training that you never have to use.
I'll also add, you know, through my experience, we did, we created the flip charts, and we created the flip charts at the time so that they could go over the window of each door, and that teachers could put them up primarily, everything you're trained about response is delayed, 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 delay. And so, now, someone going through the school won't be able to see if there's, there's anybody inside.
Sure.
And so, the first time we ran the lockdown drill, there were a lot of teachers who put the flip charts out, so you saw exactly what our response was and what we were supposed to do, and so we had to have the conversation. No, we have to be really careful of how we put those out.
Right.
So, it was fun.
Continuing with the, the goals for this year, Mr. Lynch and I had a conversation about this just the other day, but we need to really develop an, an annual whole district school safety training to be held at the PD days prior to school's opening. And I really think that this is a non-negotiable that we have to insert, because DIRTT, whenever, whenever a school year gets going, we're always racing for time, racing for, you know, trying to squeeze a training in here. Can we fit it at a half-day PD? This is something that we need to do hands-on every single year, so we are prepared, and we can have conversations with our students. And so, that's an imperative that we, that we plan to roll out after, you know, much conversation and planning with Mr. Lynch and the other members of the executive committee. Collaborate with B&amp;G. Jim Hutchinson has been a phenomenal addition to our executive committee, but we're going to work with Hutch to acquire and update the radio equipment, which is an ongoing and budget-dependent item on that, on that list. We, we acquired through the Pierce Trustees, phenomenal, another great community connection that we've fostered and we're very appreciative for. Six years ago, we, we got through them seventy-five new radios, and those new radios are phenomenal, but we're starting to see battery issues, charger issues, and the ones, the radios that we were able to salvage and, and add to those seventy-five, those are starting to go. So, now, we need to replenish that and really improve upon that communication system. Collaborate with DRA to help shape a truly safe and secure new Middleboro High School. Research and work toward acquiring a district-wide visitor management system, which, especially after the NASRO conference, I'm quite passionate about. The power of being able to, to greet any visitor in the high school with, "May I please have your license?" You swipe that license, and not only input that could be found in databases, you know, law enforcement databases, but also any, any information that through our Aspen, we can input in that, it would generate an immediate feedback on whether or not we should allow this person in the building, which is, is a far greater layer of security than the eyeball test. We can all agree to that. So, my, my hope is to do more research and, and bring in something like a Raptor, bring in something like a lobby guard. And, and both are very, very heralded across the nation, but, you know, those who go with one over the other have very strong opinion as to why. We need to find out the why before we start, you know, saying, "Hey, school committee, we need to purchase this." Continue to support and grow our network of friends in school safety, and, and really reconnect and reengage our community advisory council. When, at its inception, Liz Haskell and I thought it was imperative to bring in the community as a partner in school safety, and, and they've just been an incredible partner. But because of our status as a district and, and the type of progress that we've been making, the, the engagement with that group has not been an imperative. However, and I, I find that to be an error on my part, I should have kept them included at every step, but I also wanted to be respectful of their time, and I didn't want to meet just to meet. I think we can all agree that that's not a good idea. So, I, it's, it's a personal challenge for myself to reengage them and get them back in the fold, because I think that they'll be extraordinarily pleased with the progress that we've made, and, and they're always forthcoming with wonderful ideas that will help us at the next stages. So, so that is my, my update with, with our goals for the year. If anybody has any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you, Mr. Dizel. We can go to the committee for any questions and or input you might want to provide.
Mr. Dizel, first of all, I want to say thank you to you and your group. I think it's important work. I think sadly, you know, the incidents of school violence don't end, they continue, and so, we have to be very vigilant in this, and so, thank you. And I also, I think it's important to note to people and, and just to say that when I started on the school committee in two thousand and fourteen, and over that period in time, you know, that, that, it's a short time ago, and it, we weren't, we're doing, we're not doing the same things now we did in two thousand and fourteen, because sadly, we've learned lessons from what's happened, and we've made changes. As you, you mentioned, it used to be essentially a duck and cover, and that's no longer what we're teaching our students, and we're not teaching our teachers that anymore. And I think that's important, that, you know, the, the sad part is, as these incidents continue, more and more is learned, and, and people are spending more time looking at them and helping make decisions that come out to you, and you can hopefully apply to our school system. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I couldn't applaud you more for this, and, and you're, you're pushed to the ID system. When people walk in, it's just as easy, just scan it, and, but that, that tie-in to, there could be something out there, and then the sign out on the outside that says, "All visitors must present a government-issued ID." Sometimes, that may stop somebody who may have a nefarious thing as part of what's going on. Hopefully, they don't come around anyway, but if we do have something like that, as you're thinking about it, what about those who don't have an ID? Something to think about. There are some people in the community that may not drive or have an ID of some sort. It's the same argument as to why they don't do voter ID identification in Massachusetts. They would, they don't want to disenfranchise anybody, but if somebody were to come in, they didn't have an ID, we don't want to not let them in our building, so something to think about.
I also want to say, too, you know, from the discussions we had, Mr. Dizel, with the new high school, in some ways, the new high school is sort of the easier piece, because we can, for example, design the lobby exactly the way we want the lobby to look. But we have four other buildings, that, five other buildings that house children currently, that they're not designed that way. You know, if you think about where you walk into and go, it's not designed for security first, it's designed just because that's the way they built those buildings in the seventies and eighties and whenever they built them. And so, I think, aside from doing the visitor piece, we may have to look at how we handle those buildings and that front entrance, and how we, you know, maybe need to spend some money to, to restructure the, the beginning of the facilities for people to walk into the building, and how far away they are away from staff. So, I think we should mention that, too. Greg?
Mr. Chair, I went through training this fall before school for my job, and it was crucial for us. So, I applaud your efforts to try to have every annual PD days before school to get the, not only the former staff on board, but the new staff on board with that, because that's crucial. We just went through a list of four new hires, and they have not had this training. And so, if we do this on an annual basis, we'll make everyone more prepared, we'll just make our children safe. So, I applaud your efforts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Nothing else?
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Dizel, I hope the school committee can agree that not only is this, this job in good hands, but it's in the right hand. So, thanks, Andy, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, next up is our facilities update. Mr. Chair, next up is our facilities update with Jim Hutchinson. We can wake him up. Jim, come on down.
He's already thrown you under the bus once, Jim.
No, no. No, 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 no. Mr. Hutchinson is our Director of Grounds and Facilities and he's here tonight to talk about some of the updates that he's been responsible for implementing and coordinating. We welcome you here, Jim, tonight and we'll be talking, I'm sure, at 4:00 in the morning.
That's right.
About the storm coming in. Jim's also a very important part of the whole storm system and trying to figure things out. So...
Yeah, you're the one he blames. Yeah, yeah. Just a couple of things. I want to go over a few of the holiday break projects that were done. We had a school committee canceled because of snow and then I had a continuing ed conflict. So over the school break, this past holiday break, just through a few of the schools at the Berklin, we upgraded the alarm panel in the IT area. They have a separate panel, which the keys on that were very sensitive. And that panel was set up for whenever it wasn't punched incorrectly, it sent a medical emergency. So we had everyone there, the ambulance, police, fire and everything. So that was getting a little old with those departments and I don't blame them. So Watch 24 updated that for us over the holiday break. Also in the pool area, we've been doing quite a bit of cosmetic work in there, painting the mezzanine, the stairwell leading up to the mezzanine, which is where the spectators go to watch the meets, replacing the floor tiles and the stair treads in it really. It's made a big difference in there. Removed the water cooler that was existing and we put in a water cooler with the, an ADA water cooler with the water bottle filler station. So we were able to do all of that. In-house staff did that project. Our HBB lighting, exterior lighting, Scott Beach, our electrician, has been transitioning all of the wall packs exterior to LEDs. He's about 75% done at the complex. And then on the backside where the gym is, we had seven parking lot lights that haven't worked in quite a number of years. So he was able to get five of the seven done over a nice warm day. We've got a lift in there, so there were five working post lights in there, LEDs. So that's good to have those off. Again, we did that all in-house. Over at the high school, back in the fall, we had a power outage, had a tree come down, take power down there. And when it came back online, we lost five motors. We had no heat in the gym and the girls' and boys' locker rooms as well. So over the break, we were able to get those motors all replaced, again, in-house with our HVAC and electrician. So we were able to get the heat back online there. LDL, which we oversee as well, where Massasoia College is, there was a substantial amount of painting done there. Boutte Painting from Middleborough did the project there. And we took the two existing water coolers there and replaced those with the same ADA bottle filling stations, which I took care of myself. Here at the Nichols, our boilers are complete. We just finalized our state and local inspections. So that project is 100% done and was just in time for the single-digit weather, so that worked out well. In October, we contracted with EMA to do an energy audit through the district. It was a Level 1 energy audit. We did every school but the high school, knowing that we were going to be having a new one. That audit was paid for by the Middleborough Gas and Electric. So we did an audit throughout all the schools for lighting, heating and everything. And then they came back with that audit and determined that the complex would be the best place for us to get a return. So we then went to the next level and did an ASHRAE Level 2 audit, which we just recently got back, and for the Berklin and the Mary Kay Good. As we've received, the town has received a green energy grant, so we're going to take 75% of that grant roughly and put it towards an entire change of lighting at the complex interior. All the exterior we'll do in-house. So that project, we're hoping to get out to bid and do this summer. So that'll be all classrooms, any interior lighting, motion detectors for the inside of the classrooms, and some heating controls for our boilers, just for outside temps and what have you. So the exterior lighting, the pool lighting, Scott Beach, our electrician, and the gym lighting have already been changed over to LED, so those were taken off of that project. So we're looking forward to that. That's a big change. It's going to be a big savings, approximately a seven-year turnaround to get our money back on that. And Mr. Lynch and I will be meeting with DOE tomorrow morning just to catch up to where we are with that grant piece. So I had talked to you prior to, during the summer, we started an access control and a software update for all of our access control. We added the MECC and the Berklin and Mary Kay Good access controls around the entire perimeter. It eliminates the key piece for the teachers when bringing in kids from the outside for the playground. We're about 90% done. We had hoped they would finish over the Christmas break. They were unable to finish the velocity update. That'll be done in February. So we still have a part of those three schools that are on 100% access control. Mr. Lynch had spoke earlier about the flu. We had, obviously, flu is seemingly everywhere, so we had quite a run of it at the complex. So what we've done in, with the custodians, myself and the principals, we've, they're taking on Wednesday evenings and they're doing a very detailed disinfecting of all the classrooms, everything that the kids are touching, doorknobs, handles. Not that they don't clean them anyways, but it's a very detailed cleaning. And this past week, it's sound, the two-way has been quiet, not too many sick calls I hear over the two-way. So seems to have turned the corner on that. And then the snow removal piece, again, that's, we kind of go what we see for a forecast. Mr. Lynch and I speak, depending on the timing of the storm, coordinate with the highway department and do our best to make a call on every storm that we do. Unfortunately, it seems like they all come at 7:00 a.m. So that's at least how they've been recently. We've got a great relationship with the highway department. It's literally a call to Chris Peck. He's on the two-way and we can get a lot that maybe has been missed as far as sanding and that, so that's been good. And we also, with the MECC, the parks department does all the snow removal there for us. We have a relationship with them there. And then the highway department will commit to sand the lot. So like I said, that's a, we make a phone call, we try to guess the best we can with the forecasts that we have. And then we pull in the custodial staff as we need, see needs, if it's one, two or four, so. But that is, that is basically our rundown on our projects that we had done over the break and hope to finish during the February break.
And Mr. Hutch, I know that Garrett Perry usually sends in a list of everything that he's been able to accomplish over vacation and his report. And I usually forward that to the school committee so they have a chance to see that. Sort of one school isolated, but it is, in four days. It's just with, even with one guy on two days vacation, whatever, just an incredible amount of work and it's a credit to your leadership certainly, that they're really, not that you crack the whip, or you have to crack the whip, but there's a lot of work that gets done and it's not a vacation for everyone.
Yep.
Because these guys do a lot of the things that they can't do when kids are in the building.
Yes.
And I wanted to mention also that on a couple of consecutive Saturdays, Mr. Hutchinson spent the day on his back painting the radiators at the pool. He didn't mention that, but scraping and painting the registers, the radiators at the pool with a paint that he couldn't do when the kids are in the school. So he, that's how he spent his couple of winter Saturdays, painting the radiators, so.
The, and that piece with the Nichols here with Garrett, and he does a great job, he may be showing off a little bit, but we're going to do that throughout the district now. We're going to request that, starting with February vacation. So I know you've all seen it, but he does a good job and it's tough with the custodial because some of them have young families, so that's really the only time they can vacation. So the staffs are shorthanded, but they do a great job in that limited, most of those vacations are just a four-day week for them because the Monday is typically a holiday. So they do a very good job of that.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Hutchinson, I think as the superintendent mentioned, you know, we get a lot of school districts here and there who want to talk about, should we have certain vacations and should we not have certain vacations? But vacations are very important to you guys, especially because it gives you a break in the middle of the year to do some work that you may not be able to get to otherwise.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, for us, the vacations, even when they're four days, especially the maintenance staff, we start at 6:00 in the morning. So depending on the school, we can squeeze a couple of projects in in the morning before the kids arrive. But to have a school that's empty, we can accomplish so much more. So yeah, that's a, that's a big plus for us to have that, even just a four-day week. Or a full PD day is a big plus for us as well.
And then the other thing you mentioned, I just want to clarify for people so they understand, when you talked about the energy audit, you said the high school was not a part of the energy audit primarily because we're building a new high school.
Right.
But there continues to be lots of daily maintenance and yearly maintenance done at the high school. It's sort of the big projects that we're ignoring. So for example, it has been on the capital improvement plan to do the bridge to the high school.
Yep.
But it makes no sense to ask for that bridge to be fixed now because we're building a brand-new high school.
Yeah, so I mean, in the last two years, we've done some extensive replacement of exterior doors, lighting in that building, the T-12 fluorescents to T-8s. So we continue to do quite a bit of work there, which is needed. I mean, we're not going to be in that building tomorrow, so we'll continue to do work.
And the buildings look great. I mean, you know, given, especially the high school, I spent a lot of time in the high school, you spent a lot of time in that gym, that everything looks fantastic, given the age of the building.
Yep.
You know, we know there has to be wear and tear because buildings are older.
Yep.
But I mean, just when you go through, you can see the pride that your guys put into being in charge of those places and making sure that they look spectacular. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll continue to monitor air quality.
Yes.
Continue to do that, especially at the complex where it's been a concern in the past.
Yep.
To make sure, and all those tests have come back, that the school, the air is, the quality is good, excellent in those schools.
Yeah, so in this calendar year, we've done, excuse me, fiscal year, we've done one here, one at the high school, and then the one at the complex. And we'll continue to do that as the seasons change. So when the spring comes up, we'll have them. So what they do is they come in and they'll pick random classrooms when the kids are in. That's the best time to test the classrooms with all the breathing and CO and what have you. And they'll do the bigger areas, the cafeterias, the auditoriums, the gymnasiums, then they'll pick a random classroom in each hallway so that we have readings from all of those.
And we did that in concert with the Middleborough Education Association, the teachers, and talking about the fact that when the weather does change from season to season, we need to be on top of this and making sure that we continue to maintain an environment that's healthy for everyone.
Yep.
And so we're going to continue to do that in the future, so.
Yep. And our classrooms all, they take outside air in, runs through their Univent heating system, so those filters in there, obviously are pulling air in, so those are quarterly, we try to quarterly preventative maintenance, change those out. So the custodians will do that most of the time, but when our HVAC tech is in there, regardless of the work he's doing, he'll change that filter out. So that takes in a bunch from the outside.
Mr. Hutchinson, so they try to do it quarterly, not once every four years?
Yeah, no, we've found a few of those.
Sorry, I, my question really was talking about the fields. Are you working with our athletic director and that, planning for high school as we move towards a new high school, field location, redeveloping fields here if necessary?
Yeah, absolutely. Ryan and I have talked on the irrigation piece and we're going to try to, because this building here, it only ran for a very limited time and the water bill was substantial. So with the new high school in here, if it works out, we're looking into just a well dedicated to irrigation.
Okay.
Because the high school will have that stadium, which will have turf, but the other fields will be grass, obviously. So in the spring, we're going to try to get portions of this building up. So there's irrigation throughout here. It does the landscape beds and what have you. We're not looking to do that. We're just looking to maybe get the softball field done once every four days, the soccer fields, because right now it's, you're unable to maintain it and it becomes a dust bowl out there. So the piping is there. I mean, it's almost 20 years old now and we can in-house do the repairs. We're just going to try to designate areas that are going to require irrigation maybe once every four days, depending on what the weather is, obviously. Ryan and I had spoke about that prior to the winter, so we have a plan in place once the weather breaks to, because this building here athletically is a lot more active than it was when I started. They have a full slate, other than I think football here. So they're softball, field hockey, lacrosse, so.
In that horribly dry summer we had in 2015, which involved a drought, we went through a couple of water bills at the high school, just doing some basic watering that the athletic director, Mike Perry, was doing at the time. We had two water bills, consecutive months of $10,000. So $20,000 in water over two months. So that's why we're going to search for some, possibly some well-driven water that's coming that we can tap into.
Yeah, dedicated to just the fields. So that's definitely something we have in place.
Maybe we can find out if we can get some reclaimed water from Ocean Spray for the high school. Seriously?
Yeah.
Maybe?
I don't know.
You never know.
Any other questions for Mr. James Hutchinson?
Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it. You know, we know you take the special pride in these buildings and anyone who walks through them can't. It's hard to point out problems.
Yep.
Because your guys do a fantastic job, so thank you.
Yeah, that's great. They do a good job, they really do. And with the technology, like the flooring technology and that, they, it's easier for them to do it, but it really shows, you know, it really helps and they can use it, pay more attention to other jobs now, windows and what have you. So it's a constant battle, but we, they do a great job, absolutely.
I see you've been shopping at the Middleborough store also.
Right away.
Very nice, very nice.
All these meetings.
Thanks, Hutch.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, as we move on in my report, we go to the discussion, quick discussion, the FY19 Budget Subcommittee Meeting, and you certainly can do that as chair of that. But we will have our public hearing two weeks from today on February 15th, a budget hearing in concert with a school committee meeting. And it's going to be published per law. And that request has been put in and that will be posted, the meeting will be posted. Obviously, it'll be posted, open meeting also. So we will have a budget prepared for review for the larger school committee and discussion.
So just to bring a couple of things up to the school committee, as we said before, we knew in this fiscal year, we were having problems with special education in the sense that we had gotten additional placements. Happy to say to everybody that we will be able, we believe we'll be able to fund that within the current budget and will not ask the town for additional funds. So we were able to move that and do some things. So there's that. The second piece is, we found out today through the town manager that we will be receiving $950,000 additionally. And just so people understand, the $950,000 do not, does not cover for our races, our contractual races. So as we did last year, we'll have to look for things in the budget, move around and move. But again, it's the belief that we currently have that we can stay within that amount going forward with the town. There could be some slight problems in special education that we're aware of, that we're trying, because of those additional placements. But the chances are that we will be able to do that, so we're going to, that's what we're going to present to everybody at the full budget hearing that everyone will be...
We had additional placements on top of the, additional placements that actually brought us into circuit breaker territory, where we're going to be reimbursed through the circuit breaker of the state, so.
And the biggest thing I want to remind everybody about the budget hearing, the budget hearing is really for a number to be given to town meeting to move forward. We revisit the budget in June because we are responsible to have a balanced budget going into the fiscal year. And so if you think about it, there are things that change. And that, you know, we may have retirements, we may have people who move, we will also, we'll clearly also have, we may have other children that move into district with other issues that we need to address. And so that's what we have to realign. So what you see is sort of where we're at currently and what we're going to do with the town, but it doesn't, that process isn't over until June. And to be honest with you, it continues throughout the fiscal year. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Beno.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I was, when I was looking at the cherry sheet from the state, the cherry sheet being the money that the first round that the governor and House One, they call it, that the state's going to give us. Of our budget, about 17, of our $32 million worth of budget, about 17 and a half comes from, 17 and a half million dollars comes from the state, if I'm not mistaken, of which the state's increase this year for us was $70,000. On 17 million, which is not even a percentage of a percent, or it is a percentage of a percent, but the town has ponied up 800, about $830,000 on their 13 million dollar section or 14 million dollar section, however you look at it. And the town, once again, is stepping up, helping us beyond, because the state formula And the town, once again, is stepping up, helping us beyond, because the, the state formula is the state formula, and how it works is how it works, and it's unfortunate, based on enrollment, et cetera. But I was, I was going through that, and I always look at that number, and I, and I'm thankful that the town steps up and gives us what we, what they can. I'm thankful that we are thinking we might not have to ask for additional at town meeting, because I don't think we've done that in the last, I don't know, nine years, eight years. We've really worked hard. But I'm, I'm very thankful for what you guys do on the subcommittee. After everything you do, then you get the number from the state, which wasn't a surprise, I don't think. But, but it was, it was a tough thing to, to get. But one of the things I'd really like to ask is, when we get the budget for us dropped into our Dropbox, I'd love to have a, say, draft across the front of it and have it available as a PDF on our own website in case anyone in town wanted to look at it before they come to a public hearing. Just offer it to them, let them look at it. If they have questions, they'll get ahold of us in advance. And I just think that if we make it available, no one can come back and say, "You didn't even make it available."
I, I don't-
If we can.
Yeah, I think that's possible. I would say this, though, and just so everyone understands. Kathy gets back Thursday. We're gonna, we're gonna have a quick meeting with her on Thursday, so it gets out to you on Friday. I might-
Wait till Monday.
Wait till Monday, and that way, everybody has a chance to look it over the weekend if you see an error or anything like that.
And I just think that's-
No, I think that's-
That's not a bad idea, Brian. Maybe even send it to the selectmen, let them have it, so they have it too. I just like to, I like giving people information so they can, if they have a question.
I, I also, you know, as we sit here and have conversations about, and I agree with you that I, I don't think the state funds as much as they should and steps up like they should. And we know there's various areas in which they're supposed to do things that they don't do regarding education. But as, been looking at things in the past, and one of the things that Brian had said, we haven't asked for a budget, we haven't asked for that, we haven't gone for additional money in quite some time. I would point out that as we look through it, it was about nine years ago that, and I know none of us were on the committee at the time, that the school board went before the town and asked for a $2 million increase in a two-and-a-half override that failed. They were told, the community was told their faulty teachers would be laid off if it didn't pass. And, you know, we've come around, you know, in the 10 years. And that's not the case for other districts, and it, other districts have had problems, and other districts continue to fight sort of with their towns and, and have these battles. I'm not saying that, you know, things are easy, but I'm saying there's a cooperative approach to this from the superintendent and from the town manager, from the selectmen and from us, that has been, has worked out really, really well. And I think works out well. And I think that's one of the reasons why the community was more than happy to step up over periods in time and help with the mech roof and also help with the new high school, because they understand, stood that period of cooperation, that ability to work through some of these things.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couldn't agree more when you say that, because the night that the $2.3 million question was put, floated to the board of select was the night that I decided I was going to run for the, the seat that I have tonight, way back when. And I sat and listened to these 40 positions that were going to be cut. And then, two years later, we're adding 30-plus full-time equivalent positions without that override. And I attribute it to the people, oh, Kathy was, you know, they went through with a fine-tooth comb and really wrung out every dollar we could and, and really got classrooms down under 20. And I mean, in some cases, I, I just, with what we had. And, and with Charlie and Bob Noons, our town managers, they really have worked with us. I, I think that the collaborative approach is, is key. I mean, you work with Bob regularly. Mr. Chair, I think that that is why we are able to do what we do here. And if we didn't have that, I felt, I felt as though there was always a disconnect. I think that there's a connect now, and I think that's exactly why we're able to do it.
And I think we are fortunate to have a community where education is a priority and continues to be a priority. And I really feel comfortable in the fact that we're part of a larger balanced budget. Each year I've been here, we've, we've come forward with a balanced budget, and, and I think it's important for everyone to realize that. And, and everyone's a part of the success, and so that's the way we have to work in it. And I'm happy for the relationship I have with Bob Noons, town manager, and certainly he works closely with selectmen. But I know he's been working diligently on this budget the last month or so, working hard with department heads, and Kathy's been an important part of that. And even though she's absent tonight, she continues to, to think about it. She was texting from San Diego, California today, back and forth with me about numbers, so.
And the other thing, too, that I want to say about cooperation, it just doesn't, it's just not a conversation. Mr. Hutchinson's crew has been in town buildings that, to help out and make sure that the heat works in the library and everything like that, and so we-
And most recently, the town hall.
The town hall, the town hall. And so, whenever there's, you know, it, it's that, that kind of cooperation, too. And, you know, I'm sure if we needed things, that everyone would be here to help us out. And it's a different culture.
And the town is very appreciative of the facts, right, Mr. Hutch? Very appreciative of the fact that, that when they can even borrow, Mr. Hutch, just for an hour or so to go down and evaluate with, with Howie Bumpus, our HVAC, and evaluate a boiler that seems to be fairly new and why it's not working the way it should be, and refer out to a company that might be able to help them. And it happened in a very positive way in the library. I think that was a good experience for them, so they reached out again. They had a leakage problem, and they knew we had wet vacs, so we sent a shop vac over, and they were grateful for that, to the point where I think they bought their own and returned ours, so looking forward to that, so. Okay, set there?
Thank you.
Moving on, we have the school calendar, and I think in your Dropbox, you have two. And this is the one that you've seen as sort of the draft moving forward. And Sean Ciliano called me yesterday, the day before, and said, "Hey, can we look at that calendar and make it a little bit more Middleborough?" And so, you'll see that the little color changes have occurred. The brand of the school system is on. And I'm a little confused, I'm concerned about a little bit of the white. It looks a little fuzzy with the numbers. As I look at it on my copy, so I want to work on it with that. But basically, this is the calendar that you moved forward last time. Everybody sort of agreed on this. And this is your opportunity to approve it so that we can put, post it and let everybody know what the calendar for next school year is going to be, which includes two election dates where there will be no school, so that the parking lots will be completely free for community use. And it features three professional development days prior to the start of the school year. The school year will start the Wednesday after Labor Day, and then we'll also have a PD day on November 6th, which is the second election day. The reasons that the school year is starting on Wednesday, the 5th, is because Tuesday, the 4th, is an election day, so. As per Secretary of State William Galvin.
Chair?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the 2018-19 school year calendar as presented this evening.
Do I hear a second?
In orange.
That's in orange. Discussion. Mr. Steve?
I like how he made the holidays the Middleborough orange. I thought that was funny.
Any further discussion? I do want to thank everybody that worked on this and, and helped out, and I also, yes.
Is it Tuesday, the September 4th? That's not a PD day. That's a schools closed day.
Schools closed that day.
So, no teachers and anything, okay.
Yes.
Long weekend.
Well.
A long, long weekend. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's unanimous. Thank you. Frank, if you'd like a copy. It'll get, the, the numbers will get clearer as we talk. Mr. Chair, I conclude my report for this evening.
Next up was the MSBA report. Did you want to talk a little about the transition team meeting?
Yeah, I did attend. I went into Boston on the 19th of January and sat with the MSBA. And we, it's called a transition meeting because we went from the, the original group that we worked with in terms of putting the proposals together through Phase 3 and through schematic design, and now we're in design development. So, now we have a new crew who are much more experts in the area of construction and bidding and, and that. We were introduced to that crew, and I represented the school committee, this school committee, I represented the school system. Rich was going to join me, but got called away from work. Rob could not make it, and Mr. Brandigan was not available. So, I went in with our team from the OPM, Christie Murphy and Tim Bonifati, and Jim and Linda from DRA were able to attend. They're familiar with the players, which is good. They've done work with, with this crew before. So, there was a familiarity there, which was, I think, was really positive. And it was a good meeting. It lasted about an hour, and you went through the entire process, all the way up through Phase 7 or Phase 8, and allowed me to ask any questions that I had, and we're, we're moving on. So, we had a meeting yesterday of the committee, and we had the, the working group, and then we had the committee last night. And I don't know as if anyone else on the board has any comments about what they saw. I know Mr. Givenon, he sent me an email today, and he was very impressed with, with some of the designs that are coming out.
Mr. Chair?
And I'm not sure if that slideshow is on.
Not yet.
It will be.
It will be.
Hopefully, it will be very shortly, because people need to see that.
Mr. Chair, I, as, as I sat in the meeting, I have been skeptical at times vocally, but that's why I'm there. I'm there not, not there to just yes everything. I'm there to actually speak up when needed. But I got to tell you, there was nothing to speak up. Last night, I was, and I'm, I'm shaking right now thinking about it. I sat, a year and a half ago, sat in a visioning session over at the Boston Tavern, three days of visioning. I think I was half asleep for one of those after working overnight. But sitting in that meeting, in that third meeting, we really talked about some of these spaces, some of these collaborative spaces and vis, the vision of what we had.
We really talked about adjacency and where things were going to be.
Yep, how things were going to work together and how people could work together, kind of like how we work in the real world, when you get out in the real world. The visioning session came to life last night in a presentation, and I sat there, and as I'm looking up at some of these, these renderings and saying to myself, "They did it. They, they, they did what I thought was impossible in, with the financial constraints that we've put on them. They're able to make something like this come to life, and it's coming to life right in front of us, and they're still fine-tuning things. And I, and I'm waiting for the next piece and the next piece because it, it literally is clicking. It's the only way to explain it when you're sitting there and you see it. I don't even know if my mouth was agate. I just, I couldn't believe what I was seeing and, and how great it is. And I even told the architect, who I got ugly with one time, I said it right, too. I said, "This is amazing. You, you've done exactly what I had visioned, sitting in that visioning session with, with 40 people. When we were talking about it, you picked it up and you were able to really kind of bring it to life." That's the only way to describe last night.
I would agree with you. And when we looked at the, what called the exterior, exterior elevations as we went along, we all had opinions about what we thought the new Middleborough High School might look like from the outside. When it really matters is, is once you walk in that door and what that educational environment is and like inside. And yesterday, we were basically taking on a tour of the Learning Commons, the library, and the cafeteria, and the office area sort of coming in through the main lobby and the rotunda and the stairway that goes upstairs. And it was, it wasn't, it was actually, it was almost like photographs. I mean, it was so well-done. But you walk in and you saw this and said, "Wow," you know. There was a real wow factor yesterday. And I, and I think that you might agree when you, when you see it, and everyone has their own opinion, and I get it. But, you know, just talking about flooring pieces and what the brick and what the trim would look like, and it really, there was a wow. So, I'm, I'm look forward to having that on the website so that people can tune in and look at that and hopefully be wowed and, and provide input, if you're not wowed or both, so. And we had a couple of folks at our meeting yesterday. We always enjoy, we have another meeting February 28th coming up, a general meeting, so please put that in your calendars if you can make it. There'll be another presentation, and this is going to get more and more exciting, until the point where March 25th, this goes, we come back and it goes to estimators, and then it goes, I believe it goes back into the MSBA on April 19th. I think April 19th was the date that that has to be submitted. So, we're, we're getting there, and it's getting into a very much detailed plan at this point. And, but you could picture yourself or your child being a student in that school.
When you talk, when I, the reason why the, the awestruck piece that I have is because it's completely the same, but different. The layout, when you look down on a plan, hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Per se. It's the way they brought it to life, where there's a 28-foot ceiling in one section, you know. Because that's why I asked the question, "How tall is the ceiling here?" Because it really gives you a scope of it. And you're looking at these pictures, and I want to go back to school.
It's also the piece, it's simple things, okay? You know, and for me, it's, it's like a gymnasium. How, how exciting can you make a gymnasium? Do you know what I mean? They're all the same. We've all been in gyms before. And then you see it presented to you in a completely different way. And you're like, "Wow." And, and to me, it's funny, because I want to talk about the little things. So, we've been in this process for the working group for a while, and so when they first presented to the working group, there was a mistake made. Well, it was a mistake that we'd all like, which was, everybody on the Middleborough basketball team was seven feet tall in scale. And so, we were really hoping that, but it didn't work out. And so, they picked up on it, you know. We're just seeing a picture of that. They're like, "That, that's out of scale. We have to fix those." And we're like, like, of all the things to have, you know. But that's the sort of piece they put in to make it right and make it work. And the same thing with the cafeteria. I mean, how exciting can a cafeteria be until you look and see there are banks of different tables, there are seating banks in the back, there are juice bar-sized deck where people can sit and enjoy, and it's just amazing. And the only thing I had really hoped, and I didn't go through the visioning session, and it, my dream had always been that the new high school would be the epicenter of Middleborough, that everything would revolve around the new high school. Because, and Brian knows this, one of the first things I told Brian was, I had, I had a great meeting one time with a bunch of other school committee people, with Senator John Kerry at the time. And the thing he struck with us from the very beginning, he said, "Listen, the high school should be the first building open in the town and should be the last building closed." And everybody, they should, the high school should be there for everybody, not just for the kids. So, if people wanted to go there to learn, people want to go there to just play basketball, have a good time, it should be there for everybody. And I always thought about that and, and, you know, tried to make those things come true. But in this new building, you truly see it. You truly see what this place is going to be and where kids are going to be able to learn and be a part of that is unlike anything. And, you know, I spend a good deal of time, my son plays basketball, so I'm through the South Shore League all the time. I've gone to every game. I've gone to every single one of the new buildings in the South Shore League, the Marshfields, the, the East Bridgewater's, everything like that. And I can't be more impressed that this building looks like none of them. You know, it's funny, because I can walk, I, I have this ability now to walk into a school system that looks exactly the same as every other school system, and some, one of the parents will say, "Where's the bathroom?" Okay, if it's like at every other school, it's just around the corner to the left, and there it is, because that's the way they built them. This is not being built that way. You know, we made a very big commitment at the beginning to say, "We did not want a homogenized school. We did not want what everybody else is having. We wanted something for Middleborough." And, and we asked the, we asked the project manager and we asked the architect, "Why would you be good for Middleborough?" That was one of the questions that we sat down and looked at their bids. These two rose to the top and continue to amaze based on that piece, which is, again, over and over again. It's, it's about Middleborough. It's not about building a school. It's about building a school for Middleborough, and that's fantastic.
Very impressed.
Chair?
Yes.
At, at some point, once that gets put up to Christie Murphy, our owner's project manager, she did, I actually emailed her while the presentation was going on last night, saying, "I need a copy of this, because I need to look at it again." It was that, it was halfway through the, the presentation last night, and I was already asking for it. She's going to, she's going to get it and, and put it on the website. But once we do, we should really, I think we should, if we can get that as a PowerPoint and maybe send it to all staff.
And the suggestion came from you today to, we have a February 16th early release day, is to take some time during that. And, and in that realm, I, I thought of some other opportunities that we might have to do that, whether it be a high school faculty meeting or something like that, where we might be able to show a few of those slides and maybe have one of the reps from DRA, because they're spending a lot of time at Middleborough High School now, doing a lot of meetings. I know they're there tomorrow. So, you know, an opportunity for the high school teachers to see this. I know that they're tuned in. I know they're attending meetings, but that sort of, like I said, that little wow factor that we had yesterday, I think they need to see that, too. I think that really will come to life, that, that blend of the old and the new, and really, really well-done.
There's a lot of work that's really going into the, the piece before the April submission to the MSBA. And so, wow, one of the things that I was thinking about when I got Brian's email today was, I would like to bring them here probably after that, that, that April date and explain to the committee. And I'd also like to do it as a joint committee with the selectmen, because I think that if we can get them in to take a look at it and see what's going on, because it's important, and we want the town to see as a whole.
Maybe when they're ready to submit.
Yeah.
And that probably is a very good idea, so.
And the only reason, Mr. Chair, the only reason why I thought of that is, as I was walking around last night, seeing all the teachers around the high school, and I'm saying to myself, "The staff here is putting up with this for another three and a half, four years, let's show them what's at the end of that tunnel," and I just, that's what prompted that today, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Great, Subcommittee assignments, I talked to the committee beforehand, I still have to get to my high drive and do that, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Very second.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Discussion, yes.
Should we take out anything for voting separately on the executive session?
Well...
Would anyone want to hold something?
Yeah, I mean, we can, well, we can do executive session as part of this, as long as we vote separately not to release the items.
Well, I was thinking that there may be some people who weren't involved.
Sure, we could do whatever people want.
Yes.
I was here on the 21st of December.
Okay.
So can we pull that out?
So, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Yeah, why don't we do them separate?
Do you want to withdraw your second?
Second.
Withdraw your second?
Yes, okay.
We'll just do them separately.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fundraiser for the Middleborough High School Key Club for the Thirst Project.
Very second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes of December 21st, 2017.
Very second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstand?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the executive session meeting minutes for November 9th, 16th, and 7th, 2017.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
That was December 7th.
December 7th.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I move that we keep executive session minutes for November 9th, November 16th, December 7th, 2017, executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we declare the surplus media and television production equipment as presented this evening, surplus.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Does anyone have anything else they would like to bring up before I adjourn tonight's meeting?
Need a mattress?
Yes.
Come to the mattress sale February 10th, it's a Saturday morning, come, even if you want to just come and look at some of the new mattresses that are out there, come in and browse, please, walk through the doors, sometimes just walking through the door helps out, so please come on in, February 17th, Middleborough High School Gym.
And, I'm sorry. Mr. Lynch, is the ice hockey fundraiser still available? Did they have tickets still available?
I'm not sure if the ice hockey group has tickets available for tomorrow night's comedy, but if you call or let them know that you're interested, they may have them, so.
Okay, great.
I know I'll be in attendance, and I know that you'll be in attendance, so...
I will be in attendance.
For a few laughs.
I hope so. If not, I'll be heckling.
Mr. Chair, prior to a German, I just wanted to mention on the new hires, number four, Stephanie Woolley, I had the chance to interview her, I interviewed everyone. Stephanie Woolley's been, is an accomplished math teacher, and she's worked in a number of systems, I think, believe she's downsizing her house, she lives in a community, a coastline community, and wants, and has a horse or two that, she boards them, and she's looking to find something in Middleborough where she can live and perhaps build a barn ranch, so she was somebody that has a great deal of expertise in the math area, and is gonna be a nice addition to the Nichols Middle School. Obviously, when it comes to, we paid her in accordance with her expertise and her background and experience, but I believe that it'll be worth the investment, she is somebody who is an accomplished math teacher, has been a math coordinator in a couple of districts, and was looking to get back to the middle school level, is very, very friendly with Victoria Miles, who's our department chair at the high school, Victoria has, and Melanie, Dr. Melanie Gates have recommended her wholeheartedly, and feel that she'd be a great addition to our school department, and we're better as a result of it. Sometimes it's very difficult mid-year to get quality individuals to fill positions, and we lost an individual, Will Cantler has been here for two and a half years, he opted to go to a different school system, he did a nice job here, we will miss him, but in his absence, we've now replaced him with somebody who is an extremely strong math teacher, so it's a rare find, but I just wanted, I wanted to feature her and why she made the move, so, and we checked references, and there's no reason for her, she was well liked where she was, and it's a loss for them, and they made that very clear to us.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. With that, Chair wants to stand and motion to adjourn, and we'll meet next Thursday, February 15th at 7:00, and we'll have the public hearing on the budget at 8:00.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and thank you very much.